Good evening, everyone. Nice to have a full house. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Welcome to the Danville City Commission. The hour is 5:31. And this will be our regular meeting. So I will call us to order. And I will ask that we be led in prayer. Commissioner Terry, you have your prayer? I'm gonna ask you to do that, please.
Please join me as we pray. God Almighty, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We ask that you help us to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with charity and restraint. Give us the spirit of service and guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to listen with humility, open minds and spirits. Renew our spirits to appreciate the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. In your goodness and love, amen.
Amen. We're gonna be led tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance by Madeline Oblis. Ms. Madeline, come up here, dear. Accompanied by her mama.
No.
Grandmama.
No.
No, just friends.
She's my daughter-in-law.
Come on up here, sweetie. We'll put you right here. You see the flag? We're gonna face the flag. What do we do? Put our hand over our heart, right? And you start it off. You just start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, yeah. What we got here?
Those are just the states.
Let's see if we got it. Let's see if we've got a key. Do we have a key? I'll give her a key. We're gonna give you a little lapel pin. It's the key to the city. Is that okay? All right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear. Commission, you have had the approval, the agenda before you for several days. I'm gonna assume it meets with your approval unless I hear otherwise. All right. We're gonna move right into the section called "Hear the Public." This is the opportunity for the public to address the commission for three minutes on any item that is on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity later on for the same for any item that's not on tonight's agenda. So is there anyone that would like to speak on any topic on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll move right along. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. And Chair will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I move we approve the minutes of Monday, November 13th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks, Commissioner Cottle, or second?
Second.
Commissioner Atkins, discussion? Seeing none, Chair called question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item two is the penning of Lieutenant Will Ellis, Lieutenant Matt Groves, and Lieutenant David Spanier. Come on down.
They're kinda shy.
Not when I see 'em.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to introduce you to our newest leadership crew from the Danville Fire Department. These young men stepped up to the challenge of wanting to be engine company officer. And through testing and hard interviews, they successfully completed that challenge. And tonight, I just wanted to recognize them with official penning. They have families that will be doing the, putting the badges on for them. I will ask for the family members to come up, please, that are going to be doing the We have from left to right, we have David Spanier. We have Matthew Groves and Will Ellis. And if you'd like, would you all like to go ahead and introduce your, who they are?
This is my mom.
This is my wife, Brittany Groves.
My wife, Gesslin.
And with this badge, it does change from silver to gold representing the officer position. So if you'd please go ahead and, please be very careful.
Did y'all have to practice this?
I hope y'all put out fires quicker than they did.
You're all nervous.
Not this bunch. All right, gentlemen. Bravo. Thank you all. We're certainly proud to have you in this leadership role. I think. The good young men. Item three is one that comes bittersweet for me, and that is the recognition of Donna Fector and the introduction of the incoming recycling director, Angie Muncy. Donna, if you would.
Hi.
You look a little too happy.
Four days. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. And thank everybody out in television land. I just wanna say a few words and thank you for all the years that I've been here, for all the support that I have received, whether you were in these positions when I started and now you are. You, all of you, basically have supported me through the years, and I appreciate it. And I've appreciated the community and everybody. I've gone through three judges, numerous mayors, many city commissioners and magistrates, and I have always felt welcome. I have always felt that the political will here for a clean community was just the best part of my job. So I want to thank you very much for all these years, three months shy of 28, and I just can't even believe it. It seems like it went like that. So with that being said, thank you very much. I would like to introduce Angela Muncy. She comes from Leslie County. She was the solid waste coordinator down there. I have worked with Angie. We were both on the Executive Committee for the Solid Waste Coordinators of Kentucky. Angie is now the Chair for the Solid Waste Coordinators of Kentucky. She has also just recently been put on the Kentucky River Authorities Commission by the governor. She is extremely well-qualified. She is tenacious like I am, and it's not gonna skip a beat. So let me welcome Angela Muncy to you.
I don't think I can fill them shoes too quick. So thank you for having me. I look forward to working with everybody, and if there's any questions or anything you need, give me a call, and we'll see what we can do.
Are you from Leslie County?
I am from Leslie County.
Okay.
I was a city clerk for about 15 years in Hayden, and then I've been the solid waste coordinator for the past 12, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad to have you, and anything we can do to make your transition a smooth one and productive one, feel free to call upon us.
I appreciate that. I looked, I need everybody's patience for a little while, and we'll figure it out.
All right.
All right, thank you.
And thank you, Donna, for your service.
They got a call.
Is there a fire somewhere?
No, they didn't get a call. Hold on.
They're gonna go eat cake?
Cake? Oh, yeah. Forget the fire. Donna Fector, why don't you stand up, please? Thank you. You are the epitome, in my estimation, of what a true public servant is. There was no environmental concerns 28 years ago. There was no recycling 28 years ago. You've done all that, and you've done all that gracefully. You've done it professionally. You have always been a smiling face whenever you've come in. And to say we're gonna miss you would be just wasted understatement. You have a home here, and are you leaving? Are you gonna stay?
Oh, I'm staying. I'll be going traveling a little bit, but I'll be staying. I'm enjoying the community now on the residential.
I got a feeling that you've been in the action so much that you're gonna have a hard time.
That's right.
Just staying outside and enjoying it all.
Yep.
But try.
I don't know. I think it'll be really nice to, you know, be able to have a good time at the rest band festival and not feel like you're happy to get up at 2:00 in the morning to throw out.
Well, you paid your dues, and this community is significantly different and better because of you. And from, yeah. Chief, if you've got an extra badge, get that to her, would you? Item four is the proclamation of the IJM Miss Bluegrass Junior Team. We have back with us Ms. Vanessa Ramos. How's that? And I will read this proclamation. Come join me. Nice to see you.
It'd be nice to see you, too.
Thank you. This is a proclamation of the IJM Miss Bluegrass State Junior Team, Vanessa Ramos. Whereas Vanessa is a student at Boyle County Middle School in Danville, Kentucky, and recently competed in the IJM Miss Bluegrass State Junior Team Competition. And whereas Vanessa Ramos won the title of IJM Miss Bluegrass State Junior Team in October of 2018, representing Danville, Boyle County. And whereas she will represent the state of Kentucky and the city of Danville at the International Junior Miss Bluegrass State in Orlando, Florida, July the 8th through the 13th in 2019. And will be competing in the categories of interview, fashion, and evening gown, talent, casual wear. And whereas she will represent the city of Danville and Boyle County throughout the state at different events during 2018-19, and is a role model for the youth of Danville, Boyle County, and is to be commended on her accomplishments. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of the city of Danville, on this 26th day of November, 2018, do hereby congratulate Vanessa Ramos on becoming IJM Miss Bluegrass State Junior Team, and wish her the best at the international competition in 2019. We encourage the citizens of Danville to congratulate her on her success and representation of Danville, Kentucky. Well done, young lady.
Thank you.
Wow. Yeah, you wanna hold that? I never looked so good. Thank you, dear. Mom and Dad, why don't you stand and let everybody see you all, 'cause there you go. You can't let the child take all the credit. You did have something to do with it, I'm sure. Congratulations, young lady.
Thank you.
Item five is the first reading of ordinance number 1925. This is the zone change out on Stamford Road. Is that the first reading or second reading?
Action on the program.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. Let me back up, sorry. Do I hear a motion on the proclamation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Second, Ms. Terry. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item five is the first reading of ordinance number 1925, zone change on Stamford Road. Mr. Dexter.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, you accepted the recommendation of the Planning Zoning Commission for the zone change on the property. It's owned by Michael McAfee on Stamford Road, currently industrial business development and AR-1 to NCR-C, which is a mixed use. And we had some good conversation about that last time you accepted the recommendation. So this just formalizes that acceptance in ordinance format. So this is a first reading of ordinance 1925, which is an ordinance changing the zone from AR-1 and IBD to NCR-C for approximately 45.844 acres, more or less of real property located along Stamford Road. And again, this is a first reading.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve first reading of ordinance number 1925.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, followed by Commissioner Cottle. Discussion? Seeing none, Chair called question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need roll call?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Item six is municipal order number 11-26-01-2081. This is a personnel policy amendment. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you tonight is that municipal order as specified, and the intent of that recommended change in our current vacation leave policy is to enable the employee at their option to, instead of continuing to accumulate their earned vacation hours, to request that two weeks of that be paid to them in compensation. They would complete a form within two weeks of the payroll changes, submit that for approval, and if they have accumulated an unused vacation leave above the requirement to maintain two weeks in reserve, that could be approved and paid for. It's not an additional leave. It's actually a compensation in lieu of vacation. There are no other changes to this. A number of cities are responding to employees' wishes to have more money in their compensation instead of, or just period, more money is better. And so this is a way to try to accomplish that. It actually also will save the city long-term because today's dollars are less than future banked hours in terms of total cost. It's recommended for your consideration and approval.
Do I hear a motion to accept municipal order?
I move to approve the municipal order number 112601-2018.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. We are in discussion if anyone would like to have any questions or any comments to...
So they can sell two weeks throughout the year, but only one week at a time? Or can they do two weeks at once?
They could do two weeks at once, as long as they maintain it. And they could only cash in two weeks within an annual period of time.
And they have to maintain a minimum balance in their account?
Yes, sir.
What is, what is that amount?
That is two weeks.
Two weeks. So in essence, they gotta be employed here for several years before they can take advantage of this benefit?
They have to, it says they have to retain 10 days following the sale of any vacation hours.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Yes, that's two weeks.
That's right?
Yes, that's two.
Well, I'm just, again, trying to get it out there. It's just something new, so people need to know what we're doing.
You have to have been an employee in good standing for two years before you can even be considered to purchase, you know, sell the time back. And then they have to keep two weeks of time in their bank.
Any further questions or discussion?
I think it's good, good benefit.
Yeah, it's kind of a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
Chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Mr. Scott, we're ready for your report, sir.
Yes, sir. I have four brief items to present and discuss with you tonight. Tonight, we did honor our Donna Fector, our Director of Recycling, or Solid Waste Management, rather. Recycling, as some of you may know, is going through a big change nationally and worldwide. And on December the 4th, at, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM Eastern Standard Time, we're going to conduct a free webinar here provided by the International City and County Management Association that will discuss the changes that are taking place in recycling in that solid waste arena. The title of the program is not too encouraging. It says, in effect, "Recycling is Broken: Year-End Update." And this is gonna present challenges for the city of Danville and Boyle County as we go forward unless those economies change. My limited understanding of this is that some countries, such as China, no longer wish to purchase recyclables or to purchase them at levels in prior years. So it's not economically feasible for companies such as one that we have here in town, Republic, to consider that to be an offset to the service costs they otherwise provide to the city. So we will be getting into these issues in 2019 in terms of developing bid specs and bidding that program out, because I believe our current 10-year contract ends in 2019 or 20, 20. So we wanna bid out and make a determination prior to the expiration of the 10-year contract. This is probably the first step of that. It would be useful, in my opinion, for citizens to attend if they wish to, county officials to attend, because this will give a, kind of a big picture view of what's happening with recyclable materials. Interestingly, the presenters in this ICMA webinar are top officials at Republic Services. So they will be telling us what they've seen develop over the last couple of years, I think.
What was the date and time of that?
December the 4th, Tuesday. It'll be from 1:00 to 2:30 PM here at City Hall.
You know, there was a segment on CBS 60 Minutes, I don't know how many weeks ago. You may have seen it. And I looked at that, and I thought, well, that probably is, you know, is a problem with New York or LA or so. Uh-uh, it's right here. And so, yes, this is a big problem for the entire country.
If no further comments or questions on that topic, I would go to the next topic, and that is simply a reminder to the commission and the public that we have selected December the 12th as our city commission and staff management retreat date. On that day, starting at 8:30 in the morning, we will be discussing future work issues, priorities, and kind of looking at what our goals and aspirations should be for the next year. So that's an important date. That meeting is open to the public. It will be held because of the need to provide available parking and ease of getting to and space and all other considerations. We will be meeting at the Danville Country Club. The public is invited to participate in that meeting as well. Third topic I would mention is that we have, in your packet, and this came, I think, to us in final form, maybe past the date of sending out the packets last week prior to Thanksgiving, but there is a grant application for a riparian buffer application that is made available to the city, or could be made available to the city if awarded, to replant Clark's Run along Second Street where we are installing a new bridge. This, these plantings are recommended, I think, by our beautification committee. It would be a planting roughly 300 feet long by 20 feet wide. We've already removed the existing, I guess, many of the existing plants, so it will be plant-ready if we receive this grant, and we have high hopes that we will, so that we can plant shrubs and native grasses and so forth to minimize pollution and to improve that area visibly and for our environment. The spring, the deadline application is this week, November the 30th, hence it kind of came to you at this, in this forum. The total grant project cost is $2,070. You'll see in your papers that our applicant expenses, that would be the city of Danville, would be 20%. There is a typo in there. That's not $200, but rather 20% of $2,000 is $414. And the balance would be reimbursed by Bluegrass Green Source. It's a modest grant, but it would be one that would produce great results and high visibility results for our community.
And since we don't have our typical resolution for this matter due to its late arrival, if the record could reflect simply a motion to approve the application of the riparian buffer as presented and further authorize the city engineer to sign same.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
To both of those actions?
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
The final item I wanted to bring to your attention tonight and request approval would be the, to authorize the mayor, as the elected official for the city, to request a second level domain name on the webpage for the city of Danville, where we would basically change from danvillekyy.com to .gov. What that will do is move us up in the search engines and would give greater visibility to the city of Danville. There is an attached memo, I think attached in your packet, from our IT director, speaking of the benefits of making that move. It will cost us a little bit more, but it is clear to our citizens as well as other organizations that could more easily determine that we are an official governmental agency rather than some other agency. That's what others are doing. Louisville and Lexington and others have already done this, and it's simply a progression in our identification that would, in search, it would move us further up. It'd cost a little bit more, but we think the benefits are worth it. Total cost would be, I think, $400. $400 to renew. Currently, we're paying $100 annually. It would go to $400 annually. That's greater visibility, and we think worth the change.
And again, in this case, since we do not have a resolution prepared for it due to its timing, if the record could reflect simply a remotion authorizing the application of the .gov domain at an annual fee of $400 and further authorize the mayor to sign any documentation regarding same.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Second, Commissioner Cottle, discussion?
How did the conversation on this get started? I'm sorry, Greg.
It was, I would say, in all candor initiated by our IT director, who was looking at what other cities were doing, and he thought it was...
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So move to both of those actions.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Sears, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
The final item I wanted to bring to your attention tonight and request approval would be the, to authorize the mayor, as the elected official for the city, to request a second level domain name on the webpage for the city of Danville, where we would basically change from DanvilleKY.com to .gov. What that will do is move us up in the search engines and would give greater visibility to the city of Danville. There is an attached memo, I think attached in your packet, from our IT director, speaking of the benefits of making that move. It will cost us a little bit more, but it is clear to our citizens, as well as other organizations, that could more easily determine that we are an official governmental agency rather than some other agency. That's what others are doing, Louisville and Lexington and others have already done this, and it's simply a progression in our identification that would, in search, it would move us farther up. It'd cost a little bit more, but we think the benefits are worth it. Total cost would be, I think, $400. $400 to renew. Currently, we're paying 100 annually, it would go to 400 annually. That's greater visibility, and we think worth the change.
And again, in this case, since we do not have a resolution prepared for it due to its timing, if the record could reflect simply a remotion authorizing the application of the .gov domain at an annual fee of $400, and further authorize the mayor to sign any documentation regarding same.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry, second. Commissioner Cottle, discussion?
How did the conversation on this get started? I'm sorry, Rick.
It was, I would say, in all candor initiated by our T. Director, who was looking at what other cities were doing, and he thought it would be great in terms of a improvement, in terms of our visibility. And so he suggested it to me for submission to the commission.
Rick?
No, I, yeah, thank you for opening it up, Commissioner Cottle. So one of the things you stated, I just want to reiterate, it kind of brings us up in the domain chain. And so it certainly would be something that's positive for Convention Visitors Bureau, and attracting businesses and citizens to our, to our areas. So I think for the little bit of cost, it's probably well worth it.
Anyone else? Forgot where we were.
We have a motion in a second.
No further questions, Chair, call the, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries.
And finally, I would state that tonight, we do not have a request for an executive session.
There you are, Ms. Atkins.
That's my late Thanksgiving gift.
I was going to say Merry Christmas.[1066.04][1066.04](laughter)
Don't get used to it. With that said, we will move right into the section I promised here to the public, opportunity to speak for up to three minutes on any subject that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, we'll move right into Commissioner comments. Mr. Terry, ladies first, if you have any.
I don't think I have anything.
Ms. Atkins?
Well, I just want to remind Commissioner Terry about her challenge for December the 8th.
December the 8th.
Downtown parade?
It's the parade. What time does that start? Six, seven, 7 o'clock?
Tree lighting as of 6.
Tree lighting is at 6. Tree lighting is 6, parade is 7. We are all participating, as far as I know. Reception at the Art Center between the tree lighting and the parade.
She challenged the commission and the mayor to all show up, Rick. Yeah, right.
I'll be there about 8:30 or 9:00.[1130.25][1130.25](laughter)
I'm right up with you.[1133.12][1133.12](laughter) Kevin, do you have anything?
I do not, sir.
Rick?
What's that?
Got anything?
Yeah, I do, actually. I always like to be able to bring up points about this community, and so this past Saturday was the fifth annual pub crawl, an annual fundraiser for the Main Society. I think that speaks well of our community, that we do things like this, however we do them, whatever the fundraiser may be. But again, once, once again, successful, and brought a lot of business to downtown, a lot of people circulating. It's almost become a homecoming for some folks, show up just to be with their parents or whatever. And secondly, Parks and Rec Board meeting is this Wednesday. At the last meeting, they had indicated that they have brought the applicants for the new Parks and Rec Director down to four, and they will likely go into executive session this Wednesday to discuss who they think might be the one that they should offer to. At least, that's how they left it at the last meeting. So just wanted to bring this commission up to date on that.
What time and where?
They meet at 4:15 at the courthouse this time. They, they meet between the courthouse, City Hall, and out at the park. It depends on the weather. So this time, it's at the courthouse, 4:15 Wednesday.
Ms. Atkins?
I just want to congratulate the city, I guess, heart of Danville, downtown, somebody, but I picked up a brochure of Miracles on Main Street last week. And wow, I was really impressed with all the things that are going on in the community leading up to the holidays, but lots of neat stuff. So if you haven't seen a copy of Miracles on Main Street, there's some out here on the table in the lobby, pick up one, really, really exciting. And then the 16th of December, I really don't know what to do with this, but the Lonell Harris concert, 5 o'clock, Danville High School. The tickets are now $37.50 each. I don't know what's going on with the PR about the event, but...
You're it.
No, I'm not the committee.
You're the PR.
I'm just the bearer of the news, but I tried to be on the committee, but no, not it. But there is a meeting tomorrow at 2 o'clock, so maybe I'll have an update at the December meeting, but if you haven't got your tickets yet, please give Steve and Mimi Becker a call. Go to the website, what was it, Donna, we went to?
Arts.
Arts, Danville Arts?
DanvilleArts.org.
DanvilleArts.org, so there is some information on that website, but it was not listed in the Miracles on Main Street brochure, so I look like, oops, okay.
So there's nothing further. Chair will move on to item eight, payment of bills, do I hear a motion?
So move, pay the bills. Bill listed to 26th of November as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, it says second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion?
Do we need the amount to be public?
One of the lowest bills I can remember.
Do you want me to add that as a friendly amendment to my motion, Mr. Cottle?[1365.75][1365.75](laughter)
Any further constructive discussion? Thing done, Chair, call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item nine is Resolution 2018-11-26-01. This is a change order with respect to HDR. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We have with us Rich Smith, if you have any questions of HDR, representing HDR here tonight. You have the amendment in front of you, the work they have completed, the review of the wastewater plant facilities, and this amendment then moves them into the actual design process as part of that. One of the comments we've gotten since we started, it was the Division of Water expects us to do a facilities plan update, and that scope has been added to this amendment as well, you'll note that. In the beginning, would, would point out that this is a, probably a two-and-a-half-year contract, it's not a 12-month contract. So on the surface, it, it might look rather large, and it is, but it is an extended duration, an extended effort could exceed, you know, 30 months easily, 36 months, somewhere in that range possible.
Do I hear a motion? And then we'll go into discussion.
I love a motion to approve Resolution 2018-11-2601.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. We're in discussion. I have a question, does this encompass all of our wastewater systems?
No, this is improvement specific to the wastewater plant itself, and it is not a complete renovation like the water plant was, per se. It's, it's part of a multi-phase process that can occur over the course of time. This is, the improvements here mostly are for reliability, for example. The, you'll notice the UV disinfection system is identified as a particular item. That is, that system itself is more than 20 years old now, was put in in the late 90s and is first-generation technology, and quite honestly, is very expensive to maintain at this point. It's also very high energy consumption with that age technology. So it's improvements like those, sludge handling, for example, the screening facility is antiquated. So it's getting the existing plant, existing system up to a modern standard with, given our, our demand that is placed on the structures. The phase two components will be capacity-related, but the nature of the wastewater plant is a little different than the way the water plant was oriented, in that the water plant itself was at a, at a complete end of life. The wastewater plant is really 20 years into its most recent upgrade, right? Which is when you would expect things to start wearing out, like the UV system, or like your screening system and those components.
Earl, since part of it, seems like it may have to do with energy consumption, can we marry this with train any, any way possible? Would that be advantageous in any way?
Not really. You're better off, at this point, because you have structural improvements that you're required to do, you can embed those improvements inside of this contract, and then you will receive 100 percent of those benefits.
Gotcha.
Didn't we talk about that?
We did.
And they decided it was better to do this separately?
Correct. Right.
Any further questions?
Well, we need to announce the amount, somebody's out there thinking to themselves, the amount's for $960,600, is what we're approving.
Which is consistent, the percentages are consistent with their work that occurred on the water, water plant itself, consistent with the funding agencies, allowances, et cetera.
This was already in the budget?
It's, it's been programmed for a number of years, correct.
Right.
Any further questions?
We'd like to invite comment, we have a guest. Do you want to make any comments about this project?[1634.41][1634.41](laugh) Drove all the way from somewhere here, right?
I was about to say somewhere, Rick.
I'll be glad to. I think Earl said it pretty well, but just add a couple of things. Facilities plan update, as he mentioned, hasn't been done since 2009, so it's going on 10 years here in '19. So that was a division of water requirement. And as Earl said, we're looking at phased improvements to the plant, so phase one would address some of the immediate needs, including the UV system, screening, sludge handling, solids handling, disposal, some of the immediate needs, and then phase two would actually look at expanding the capacity, so.
Yeah, this, for example, is addressing the laboratory structure of the building, which is many more years than 1998. It was original construction at the site.
Any further questions?
It may not be your main focus, but would you have any kind of guesstimate on how much savings might be in terms of running the plant? That was commented there by modernizing things that are going on.
No, not at this point. It is something we'll look at during design, is operation and maintenance costs.
Okay.
So would expect there to be some more efficiency there.
This is more about compliance.
Correct, yeah. This is compliance in the phase one of the capital improvements. But we will be looking at the OM costs as part of the facilities plan update. Division of Water requires the alternatives analysis, and that includes OM costs, and so we'll be looking at that in detail.
No further questions, Chair. Chair, call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, carries. I would like to back up to one thing on the riparian buffer application. I want to thank Jennifer Kirchner and Janet Hamner for bringing that to the table. Thank you, ladies.
And Mr. Mayor, well, we're still in the utility service section of the agenda. Commissioner Cottle, I want to offer you the opportunity to bring your recyclables to my house.
Okay.
They did a real good job picking them up in my neighborhood.
That just goes to show.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and signed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Thank you.